So format will be each candidate will have a few minutes to introduce themselves and talk about why they're running. Then there will be five set questions that you should receive a copy of as you walked in. You each also received some note cards that look like these, and that's for your questions. So when you finish them, if you'll hold them up or pass them through, our stack will be floating, we'll pick those up from you. And then we'll get through as many of those as we have time to at the end. And then we'll also share the remaining questions that didn't have time to be asked tonight with each candidate afterwards. And if they so choose to respond to my written format, then we'll publish those standards on their behalf as well. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to our moderator Scott Shaw. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Joe Smith and Miral Hurley. First, on behalf of District 3 and all of Hamilton County, thank you all for being here. Thank you for your willingness to take on the role of serving on the school board. It's a vital role, not only obviously to the children of Hamilton County, but to the community as a whole. And I thank you both for your willingness to serve the county in such a vital way. We've obviously gathered here this evening to hear from each of you at this event, co-sponsored by Unified Ed and Chattanooga 2.0, so that the voters in your district can hear your views and can make an informed decision at the polls on Election Day. So without further ado, let's let the people hear from their candidates. As indicated, we have, the beginning is a four-minute introduction for each of you. I'm going to be very old-fashioned and sexist and allow the lady to go first. We only have one microphone, so we're going to have to pass it around to be generous with it. Ms. Hurley?
Well, Sean, I don't know how it's going. I don't know how I feel about that. Well, like Scott said, my name is Miral Hurley. And first and foremost, I just want you guys to know that I am a parent. I'm going to embarrass my little one right there, Cecilia. She is in Hamilton County Schools. So as far as my reasons for running, it's primarily because of her. I also have a 19-year-old who graduated from Center for Creative Arts, and I was actively involved in her education. And it's very important, I realized, as a new parent raising a teenager, that being involved and invested in their education is so vital to their growth and their prosperity. So the other side to that is that I am also a parent who's involved in my community. I am the executive chair of the Community Advisory Board, and we're a group that works to break down silos of communication in our community. Making sure that we are able to provide resources and share those resources and fill needs for families in our community. I am also actively involved in theater. So the Chattanooga Theater Center is another way that I actively participate happily. It's what I call my "self-care." So I love theater. And another way is that I'm actively involved at the Mayor's Council for Women. And what we do there is we are working to ensure that there are policies that are actively working to help and inspire and improve the lives of women in our state, actually. So my objectives for running, I want to create awareness for mental health. It's important to understand how mental health impacts education, and I want to be a voice for that. I also want to be fiscally responsible with our tax dollars. I want to bring our community together. As I said, I'm actively involved in our community, so I understand the importance and the impact that happens when we work together. So that includes working with our students, that includes working with our parents and our teachers and our staff, our school board and our county officials as well. So I want to see a Hamilton County where we are all rising together. So, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
You too.
Had heard your story. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. You too.
Listen, I gotta stand up for just a minute for this first little part. I hope that when you came in, we had my bio and stuff out there, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time. I see a lot of premier faces and people I have known over the years and worked with. I'm not going to qualify myself. You know me, you know my work. And I'll be brief with this introduction. I gotta say this. I have a great friend. I wouldn't embarrass him if I called his name. He's here tonight and has kind of mentored me the last couple of years since I've been appointed to the school board. And he said to me one time, he said, "Joe, how that you're doing public service, you just can't take things personal." That was his advice to me. And I'm proud to really hear that advice, but I gotta tell you, I'm human too. And over the last few weeks, 10 days, 12 days now, a couple of weeks, I guess, and there's just been some very hurtful things that have been said. Some of those things by various organizations that sponsored this event tonight. It's been hurtful, and it hurt my family. And I just want you to know that, and I know we'll talk about some of this in detail, but I want you to know that, man, I believe so much in diversity. What I'd like to do is invite everyone of you to my house at supper time, and I could really show you what diversity looks like. Since I can't do that, I've invited my family to be here. So guys, stand up over here tonight. And I've sent out that, we're Joseph and the baby. We got a brand-new grandbaby. Thank you all. That's what diversity looks like. We got a brand-new grandbaby, and they'll be here. I guess, love that one? And boy, I'm so proud. It's just like, I'm so proud of him. But I would say, frankly, to Unified Ed, to Chattanooga 2.0, and I think the Urban League had a part in this, and also the Teachers Association. Thank you guys for taking time to be here. It's important. And I just appreciate so much. I've served you for the last 18 months, and I will continue to serve. So we'll learn a lot tonight together.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So as indicated, the format going forward will be that there are a series of questions provided. In fact, each of the candidates will have three minutes to respond to the question, and then that candidate's opponent will have a one-minute rebuttal period, and then we'll flip it, and the other candidate will have a three-minute response to the same question and a rebuttal period as well. Turning things, from the introduction period, Mr. Smith is the incumbent. You get the benefit, or perhaps burden, of feeling the first question first. Our community is here tonight, and historically, there has been a disconnect between our elected officials and the experiences and needs of Hamilton County residents. How will you ensure, or how have you prioritized transparency and accountability in your tenure as an elected official?
Mr. Shaw, first, I have to disagree with you on some level. The premise of your question, I don't agree that there's been a disconnect. Certainly, there hasn't been a disconnect in the 18 months that I've been serving. So I disagree with your assertion here. Let me say that our county commissioner up here, and I think you see here, Greg Commissioner Martin, he and I talk two or three times a week, and we're discussing issues that affect students in this district and our schools. We attend events together, and we're very close together. Many times, I've been in the mayor's office, and he welcomes me in, and we talk about schools, and we talk about issues. And I don't see a disconnect. This board, since I've been serving, has worked very closely with the county commission, and we adopted a capital plan some months ago, and we work very closely together. In terms of transparency, recently, we just completed our budget process for this year. And I gotta tell you, I don't believe I've ever remember a budget process in the history of county government being more transparent. And the public got ahold of the documents at the same time that we, as board members, got ahold of those documents. Every time we had a work session, you know, those were open, and those documents were given to the public same time we saw them before those sessions. So the staff, Dr. Johnson, have insisted upon transparency, and we've been able to do that. So I just want you to know that we're going to continue that trend, because there may have been disconnects in the past. I can't speak past 18 months, but I can tell you, in the 18 months that I served, there is no disconnect. And I know the county commissioners, I know my county commissioner, Greg Martin, very well. And I know we're going to work together, and I believe the other county commissioners are too.
Ms. Hurley?
Can I repeat the question?
I can. The question was, and this is your one-minute rebuttal. The question was, our community is here tonight, and historically, there has been a disconnect between our elected officials and the experiences and needs of Hamilton County residents. To Mr. Smith, how have you prioritized transparency and accountability in your tenure as an elected official? This is your one-minute rebuttal.
Sorry, can I just clarify? Sorry, just to clarify, it's three minutes per candidate, and then an option for a one-minute rebuttal for each intern. Sorry for the confusion.
I apologize.
You have three minutes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. So as a community member and as a parent, I can see on the outside that the current system can be frustrating, and that it is frustrating. I do believe that transparency is something that is needed, and that it's needed from our school board, our county commission, and the community as a whole. And this includes our budget too. And I do agree with Joe, I want to think that we, as superintendent, we had a, there was a budget meeting that did happen. We proposed a budget that was very open and very transparent in what he projected to do, and I think that is wonderful. I think that, and I believe that we need more of that. As a parent, like I said, that knowing my child's involvement in these schools, knowing where those are being spent, knowing how they're being spent is important. For example, if you're a parent or a teacher, you know about class dojo. One thing that I see constantly are reports about her accomplishments and her progress in school. And I think that it's something that gives me great pleasure to know about the things that are happening throughout the day, and poor my daughter. That's the level of transparency that we need to have on every level, within our school board, within our county commission. If we have updates on what process is happening, not the end result, but if we're a part of that process, being involved and invested in this community, that we become stakeholders at that point. So having that level of transparency as a school board member, being connected to me in that way. So as far as my level of transparency goes, as far as my level of accountability goes, something that you can do is connect with me right now. You can take out your phone to find me on Facebook. My handle is @miralhurleytn. You will have updates to this race and updates as far as things that are happening in the community. Another way is that I will show up to every school board meeting. I will be there, because I know that teamwork is essential to making progress for our children and for our county. And the other thing is that I'm already involved in our community in so many different ways, and that's something that I plan to continue. So yes, that's what I have to say.
Mr. Smith, you have a minute for rebuttal? None at all? Okay. Thank you both. So we'll move on to the second question, which is a bit lengthy, but Ms. Hurley, this one is yours first. Unified Ed and Chattanooga 2.0 are both committed to ensuring equity for all of our young people in Hamilton County. Together, we define equity as, and I quote, "all students reaching their full potential by ensuring that they have access to the resources and supports that meet their individual needs." In practice, equity will show itself in our work, in the policies we support, the conditions we enable, the coalitions we mobilize, and the systems we seek to improve. We know one half of our schools are schools of concentrated poverty, where 80% or more of the student body is eligible for free and reduced lunch. Additionally, given the large size of our district, we, in the rural communities, can also be isolated from city-centered resources and opportunities. Historically, across the country and in our county, we have struggled to ensure racial and socioeconomic integration of our public schools, a strategy that research has shown to be effective for improving student outcomes. As a school board member, what specific strategies will you employ to ensure a plan is developed and implemented to fully integrate our public schools to ensure equity for all our young people?
So aside from the controversy that's happened over the last few weeks, I will say that racial and socioeconomic integration is needed. If we look nationally, yes, it is something that we see, it's a problem. What I will say is that there are more things that connect us. We have so many things that繫连us together. We have so many other commonalities and we do differences. And I believe that's something that we can find a way to bring racial and socioeconomic integration to the table that may not be what we think it has to be. One way in doing that is through models that already exist in our community. We have so many schools, from the Center for Creative Arts to Rivermont Elementary to CSAS to CSLA, that are integrated, that are thriving. They, if not most, if not all of these schools are thriving, that's our model. That's something that we can utilize to say, what are the things that bring us together? What are those interests, what are those gifts and talents and those likes that help our children feel like they belong, that help them thrive, that cater to those gifts that they have, that nurture those talents, that those teachers have an ability to speak to them because they have the same shared values, the same gifts and the same talents? So they have built-in mentors on top of that. So that's one way that I see that we can integrate our schools. And I do also know that this is a multifaceted approach, so it is not relying solely on one person. It takes all of us working together. That includes the school board, that includes our county commission, that includes our community, having input from our parents and our teachers, those who will be directly invested in our children's lives. So that's the way that I see it. And I will say also that with the background of mental health, if you take, for example, a child who, let's say, one of the things, stereotypical things that boys don't do is dance, okay? So if you take a child who is in a system where he is ostracized and alienated because of a gift like dancing, and you place him in a school where there are other boys who love to dance just like he does, he has an opportunity to thrive. His mental health is something that we have an opportunity to cater to and nurture and pour into. So I do believe that we have an opportunity to provide a system where our children can thrive, and that's one way to do it. And we can be fiscally responsible with that. We can find a way to do that. So I believe that in being fiscally responsible, we can fulfill the needs of our children and our community and our teachers and our parents and our staff as a whole.
Do you have a specific strategy in mind for accomplishing that?
A specific strategy for accomplishing that?
So as far as a specific strategy, what that looks like is taking, we already have a model in place from our schools that exist. The strategy that I have is putting into place schools that are based on interests and that are based on likes, not based on racial and socioeconomic, because those schools are already integrated. They're the most diverse schools in the county. So we model our strategies after something that already exists, then, does that answer your question? Then we don't, that's easy. I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, is my point. There are models that exist that we can cater our community to.
Thank you. Let me answer your question first by telling you kind of a short story. Over the years, Ms. Merritt, who happens to be my wife, and I have taken in a lot of kids into our home. And every time we take one in, we give them an option. You can either stay in your home school, or you can go to the school that we are zoned for. In other words, where our home is at. Oftentimes, they would want to go to the school we're zoned for, but more than often, they want to stay in their home school, where their friends, where they grew up. That's where they're comfortable. Most of the time, these kids are failing, they're disciplined problems, their life is a mess. But after being with us a while, grades begin to improve, behavior goes away. Got one here tonight. I'm telling this story. He stayed in his same school. He's in our home. There's stability, there's accountability. Grades coming up, but he's got the same friends, he's got the same teachers, he's got the same schools. Now that changed. We don't talk much about tennis. We just don't. You know, the APEX report talked about it very little. Their report calls for social-economic desegregation or integration based on poverty and race, or poverty and race. And that's where I had a little parting with the West with that claim. Now, let me just kind of pull over the side of the road there for just a second, because I want to make sure everybody understands. In no form or fashion is Joe Smith opposed to the integration of public schools. Now, I've been accused of that, but if you know me, my life is a testimony to just the opposite. Listen, we're doing some great things. I think that any child, regardless of race or color or gender or identity, I will be able to go to any school they want to. They should. It's called open enrollment. Now, they got to figure out a way to get there. If they're making a choice to go to a school by the zone, and if there's room, they got to find a way to get there. And what a great way for an advocacy group like Unified Ed to help us figure that out. So that those kids have that opportunity. I have some other things to say. I know, I know we've got some schools in our district that are not integrated the way they should be. Hickson High School is not one of them. Come walk the halls of this school, you'll see the law of diversity. We got some that aren't. Why? That's where those people live. We got some schools in the inner city that don't have any Caucasian kids. Why? That's where those people live. So we got to figure out a way to provide services in those communities where they live. I'm for open enrollment, I'm for integration, and I'm for community schools.
And I guess the same question that I had for Ms. Hurley. Do you have a specific strategy for implementing that?
Well, your question was, what would I do to socially, economically, racially integrate schools? And I said, I don't agree with that philosophy, so maybe you didn't understand my answer. So if I don't agree with that philosophy, obviously, I don't have a plan. I have some other things I'd love to say about all that, if I may. Again, we have a few schools in Hamilton County that have been identified by the state as failing schools. And we've all heard about that. And the state threatened to come in, take them over, and Dr. Johnson came, and we developed the Opportunity Zone, we're doing some creative things, and then the state backed away. Listen, in some of our, what we call failing schools, we've got some gifted teachers. We've got some great administrators. We do. Those teachers in those schools have the hardest job of anybody in Hamilton County. Because here's what happens. They go to school, they got to be the parent, they got to be the nurse, they got to be the social worker, they got to be everything to that child. And then somewhere along the line, that teacher gets to do what they've been trained to do, and that's teach a classroom. So this year's budget allows additional resources for those schools. We've hired new guidance counselors, new art teachers. We're providing a lot of resources for those high-risk schools. And I know that Dr. Johnson is committed, the board is committed to do more. When resources become available, do this. And once again, I think it's important. I want to say it again. Say it once. But our District 3, this school right here, I am so proud. And I see one of the principals, Dr. Williams, is here. This is a great school. And again, if you want to see diversity and how it works, come to Hickson High School and see the things that they're doing. I thought it went off.
Yeah, it did go off in the little, it is off. I think we're just going to have to talk really loud now, or maybe there's a workaround. Ms. Hurley, you have a one-minute rebuttal?
Yeah. So I would say to that, that we have two Chateaugas. And we have a Chattanooga where we have needs, we have gaps in our community where our children are not being provided with the things that they need to thrive. And we have a Chattanooga where parents have the resources and the ability to fulfill needs for those children. With the budget that's currently in place, we know that it's not enough. We know that we have a lot of needs that aren't being fulfilled. So how do we go about fulfilling those needs? And how do we look strategically, long-term, to what's going to be best for our children? So if we propose that we do nothing, what happens? Do we stop growing? Chattanooga is growing exponentially, and we have to change and grow with it. And if we choose to do nothing, it is based on the way that we're doing, the direction that we're going, there's not much that will change the lives of the children of Hamilton County. So I do believe that there is something that we need to do, and we still need to go about making a difference and making a change. So.
Mr. Smith, you have a minute?
Get to the next one.
Well, that was a follow-up question, so he gets a minute to rebut what you were about to say.
Listen, we're getting ready to, one of the most exciting things, and I don't think we've talked about enough. We're getting ready to launch 17, what we call Future Ready Institutes. Essentially, they're magnet schools, and they're going to be all over the district, different embassies at different schools. And so young people have the opportunity, once they get their high school diploma, they're also going to have a marketable skill, whether it be a CNA or a welder or whatever, or several of them. And my goodness, that's going to increase our diversity across the whole county, because we'll have kids from all over the city picking out which school they want to attend. Which they've got a challenge, they've got to figure out how we're going to give them that. And that's where advocates and directors can step in and help us.
Thank you both. Reminder at this point, you were given note cards when you came in. Feel free to write any questions that you may have on those note cards. There will be floaters wandering around periodically throughout the evening. They can collect those from you. And some of those questions, perhaps not all of them, will be asked of the candidates at the end of the fixed questions. Mr. Smith, question three. Only 42% of our kindergarten readers are going to school ready to learn on day one. The rate of readiness is half that in schools of concentrated poverty. What are your thoughts on the role of early childhood education and expanding programs such as the Camp K pilot that will support 300 riding kindergartners this time in getting foundational skills to be successful in school?
Well, I mean, I think anybody that is, am I on or go off again?
Go on again.
It's only on for me. I'm sorry.
I'll try to speak loud. Can everybody hear me? I think everybody that cares about education certainly cares about early childhood education. And I too, as you just mentioned, am especially excited about what Chattanooga 2.0 is going to do with regard to their Camp K. And it has a component in that Camp K that I think is critical. And that being that for those kids to participate in that Camp K, the parents got to participate too. You know what's sad, and I see it all the time, is that a lot of young people today, especially young people who are maybe in some of our failing schools, seemingly don't value education. That's a sad thought. Well, why is that? It's because the adults in their lives hadn't valued education. We got to do better with that. You know, education is from the womb to the grave. I'm 65. Somebody say, "You don't look at old Joe." I'm 65, and I learn something every single day in education, womb to the grave. And we got to start these kids when they're infants. We got to start them when they're infants. And the parent, it starts with the parent. And I tell kids all the time, my kids will tell you, "Be better than me. Be better than me." You ever heard me say that, guys? All the time. "Be better than me." Listen, I would Listen, I would love for us to be able to provide preschool, pre-K for every child in Hamilton County. Wouldn't that be wonderful? Let me tell you, that's going to come with a huge, huge price tag. So, I'm confident that Dr. Johnson will continue to look at state and federal grants, trying to figure out funding. And then if he thinks that we need to go to the taxpayers and ask for more money for that, he'll come to us and let us know. And then we'll have that conversation.
Okay. So, I do believe that this, with statistics like that, is a significant problem in our county. Prevention is something that is key. Early childhood education is something that, if we're focusing on kindergarten readiness, then we're getting our children off to a great start. So, it's very important. The thing that I want to keep in mind, and Joe made mention to this. He put the... He put everything on the parents, that the parents have the responsibility in the education of their children. I would say that if we started to look at life, if we started to look at the situations, look at the person next to you, and realize that we need to keep in mind that your reality is not the reality of the person sitting next to you. We have some parents who are working two or three jobs. They don't have the ability to read to their children at night. They may not be home by the time their little one goes to bed. We have some children who are going home, and they're the only person in their home who speaks English. We have other children who go home to grandparents who can't read. So, having the expectation that we have to have the same solution for all children, we have to come together. We have to come together as a community, thinking like a community, to come up with answers and solutions that involve all of our beautiful families that exist here in Hamilton County. So, that's something that, when we have statistics like that, when we come up with solutions, we have to keep those things in mind.
Thank you.
Let me just correct one thing, because I think I heard you say that Mr. Smith said that education of the children is all on the parents. That's not what I said. What I said was that education begins with the parent and in the home. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
So, what I wrote down that you said is that adults don't value education, and children don't value education. And that is not the reality for all adults, is my point. That there are a lot of families, a lot of parents out there who do value education, but their situation is built on survival, or their situation is built on, "I'm a single parent, and I don't have the ability to cater to my child's needs because I have to keep a roof over their head, and I have to keep food on the table." So, when we come up with a solution, it has to be a wraparound support of our children and our parents and our community coming together as a whole to come up with what works best for everyone, all of our children. Not just the ones who have the access to the resources, but those who don't as well.
I promise I won't mess with you.
Teacup, teacup.
I'm actually not going to make that promise. I'll promise I'll try not to mess it up. Ms. Hurley, I believe this one is for you. In the past, there has not been a multi-year strategic plan that has guided budget priorities or was directly linked to student outcomes. This means that each year, our community and schools face a zero-sum dynamic where access to limited resources are not made based on a long-term vision for our county schools, but rather based on a crisis framework that continues to happen annually. How are you, as a school board member, going to advocate for and help build out a multi-year strategic plan and budget that is open and accessible to our community and maintains an equity lens?
All right. So, as a community member, the strategic plan of years past, it has not been clearly evident, for sure. I do believe that, again, this takes a community approach. And what I mean by community is that we all need to be involved and invested in this process. And that starts with our county officials and our school board, as well as our parents and our teachers. And I will continuously say that, because again, I am actively involved in our community. And I know that when we're all working together, we can rise together. But our objective needs to be, first and foremost, that we're physically responsible with our money. And actually, our money, the money our tax dollars are being spent in trying to come up with solutions, the right solutions for our children and our education. So, we have to be physically responsible first. The other thing is that we need to go over the budget with a fine-tooth comb. There are a lot of nonessential things, a lot of non-effective things and programs that are not working. So, why not redirect those funds to our top priorities? And our top priority needs to be our children. They're our future. Educating them and providing for them needs to be our top priority. So, looking at a budget, looking at those things that aren't working and getting rid of them, redirecting those funds so that we're not utilizing or trying to come up with additional funding or asking for more money from our community. There's money there. We just need to get rid of those things that aren't working. So...
Then, let me clarify. As I understand the question, it is not one about how do we budget responsibly. The question is, how do we budget in a way that looks forward for an extended period of time? Not just, what can we do to manage things together this year and the next year face the same crisis? How do we specifically craft a multi-year budget proposal that doesn't create a crisis year after year?
Yes, yes, yes.
The brief response I called just for me asking the question.
I appreciate it, Scott. So, I would say to that, that Johnson has... If you guys were able to see the preparation that he does, the work that the school board did with the budget, it is a strategic plan. And it is looking multi-year ahead to what we can do. I do know that there are some deficits in our school system, from the counselors to the... The number of... And it went off again.
See, I didn't do it.
I will project. So, I know that there are some deficits that exist in our community. And we do need to come up with a multifaceted approach. We have one. It looks that there is one. It looks like there is one that is being crafted. I think, again, that this is not a decision that can be solely relied upon one person, but it does take all of us working together, where we are vetting different programs, we are looking at systems and finding ways that we can get rid of the things that aren't working. And this is currently, yes. But in finding those, the extra monies that are not being, that are not essential and are not being effective, we have an opportunity to utilize those funds, to put more counselors in schools, to put more SRO officers where they need to be for safety. We have the opportunity to provide those other programs that can help us rise together. So, as far as the strategic plan goes, that looks like, again, all of us sitting down at the table and coming together for a solution that may not already exist. Does that answer it? I don't know if you want this. Just hold it for...
Mr. Shaw, I know that you didn't write these questions, so I'm going to shoot the messenger once again.
Fair enough. Shoot away.
Yeah. Your assumption, once again, is incorrect.
Okay.
We have a strategic plan, and we have had. My very first board meeting eighteen years ago was a weekend retreat within interim superintendent Kirk Kelly. And we developed that strategic plan. When Dr. Johnson got to town, well, we revisited that plan, and we updated that plan. And this year's budget is budgeted to that plan. So, to assert that we hadn't had one, it's just not correct. Secondly, I would say that one of my colleagues on the board, Ms. Tiffany Robinson, for a long time, has advocated for a three-year budget plan. And I support that idea. Now, there's some challenges related to that because we don't know, from year to year to year, exactly what our growth money is going to be and what their revenue money is going to be. But we can make a pretty good guess. So, I support that we look at that. And I got to tell you, for the first time last year in over a decade, this board presented the county commission with a balanced budget. And we did it again this year. So, we're showing fiscal responsibility. And I don't think that the way to fix things is to always put more money into things. That's not the way to fix things. It's just not. And I know that my responsibility, or part of my responsibility, as a board member, and I know it's Commissioner Martin, who's my commissioner here in District 3, and our mayor, we have a responsibility to be good stewards of the money that the taxpayers give us. So, I think that that's critical, that we keep that in mind. Throwing money at the things is just not always the answer. But we have a strategic plan, a very good strategic plan that anybody can access by going on that website. And if you compare that to our budget, we're budgeted to that long-term strategic plan. So, the question, that assumption, that question's incorrect. Whoever wrote that.
Fair. Ms. Hurley, any rebuttal? All right. Last chance here. Reminder that if you want to submit a question, submit away. I'm about to ask the fifth and final question, which will be directed at Mr. Smith. And after that, I will go to the questions submitted from the audience. Mr. Smith, workforce development has become a hot topic across many organizations and businesses. What do you think about dual enrollment programs in schools that teach a specific skill and lead to a credential?
Well, you know, I tell you, the business community, I agree. They should support our schools. And really, if you look at some of the history, especially since merger twenty years ago, they have been. Now, I got to say this, that the business community has stepped up bigger and bigger and bigger over the last couple of years. And that's certainly encouraging. The Future Ready Institutes, again, if you don't understand what that is, it's exciting, the possibilities that those institutes are going to bring, giving our students an opportunity to have a good-paying job once they graduate from high school. Because we know all kids are not going to go to college. So, that's so vitally important. So, I really thank Chattanooga 2.0 for what they have done related to that. I've worked in the nonprofit world for thirty years. And it's amazing how in Chattanooga, how business always seems to rise to the challenge. I got to believe, I don't know if it's a more philanthropic community in the state. I could be wrong, but it's just amazing how people want to help, how people want to get involved, and how people want to help. I remember years ago, some of you teachers, older teachers will remember when we had the Adopt a School program. And it was effective, but it couldn't be sustained because we didn't have the funding to do it. And that Adopt a School program is really akin to what we want to do with the community schools. And I saw my friend Stephanie Hayes walk in a minute ago, and what they're doing with the community schools over at Red Bank High School. Just amazing. Where they're taking services, wraparound services, to the school. We're working on one over here at Hickson Middle School. And there's going to be others. So, that concept works over the years in our YCAP program. And all those services that are provided in terms of parent classes and parent support and mentoring and counseling and accountability, and all those things work. So, maybe we need to look at some of those things and take programs like Stephanie Hayes's community school over at Red Bank High School and the YCAP program that my young son directs now, to our communities that need those services. And again, who's supporting that is our business and industry and our philanthropists. And it's an exciting thing for Chattanooga to have that.
Thank you. Ms. Hurley?
So, the, if I'm hearing correctly, you're talking about workforce development and how we can go about...
Dual enrollment in schools that would specifically lead to...
We've got two microphones now.
Is this working?
Testing. Testing. Have it turned on? Push button. Testing, testing. Testing on. Hello? Can you hear me? Okay.
So, we're talking about, so, not also, dual enrollment and programs in schools that teach a specific skill and may lead to a credential.
Okay, wonderful. So, I will say this, that Hickson High School is a great model for this. You all have a workforce development program that's already actively working. So, I want to just say what a wonderful job the teachers and staff, the parents and the students are doing already here at Hickson High School. I do believe that it is essential to creating opportunities for our children by providing them with opportunities like this. One thing that I would say that could enhance this is making this a system that starts earlier. We're working with early childhood education, but what if we were to bring in our local community and our local businesses, and they were invested in the beginning of a child's education at the beginning? If we had local businesses, you guys know about the Career Days, you know, Bring a Parent to Work Day, those kinds of things. What if we did that with local businesses? They came into elementary schools and said, "Hey, this is what I do. This is what you can do." And we're able to provide that beginning exploration and that development from the beginning. We're there to provide quality, high-quality education for children, connecting them to the education and the resources that they need. But then, on the other side of that, we're allowing them to have an opportunity, when they're entering high school, to go out into the community and maybe find a mentorship program with the local business, maybe be able to have an opportunity to expand their knowledge of what's possible. I know that there are a lot of children who are exiting the school systems, and they're not prepared. How many of you, if you can think of it, knew exactly what you wanted to do when you left high school? It took some time to do that. But if we were to partner with our communities, partner with our local businesses, But if we were to partner with our communities, partner with our local businesses, and found ways to invest in that exploration and finding ways to develop their gifts and their talents so that, once they left high school, they had more direction, and they were able to set themselves on a path. Yeah, that's what I would say for now.
Mr. Smith, any rebuttal?
Well, again, I want to mention the community schools concept, where kids will be able to stay in their community. We don't have to move them around like the Apex reports suggest. And we're going to provide services in that community. And again, with what Chattanooga 2.0 is doing with our magnet schools, and these kids are going to have a lot of opportunities. So, I'm proud of what our workforce partnerships is doing and helping to count.
Thank you.
One thing with that is, our world is huge. We, the world is big. And I know that there are a lot of young people who... One of my jobs prior to the one, I'm currently the director of a mental health program that works with at-risk youth and young adults for mental illness. A job that I had prior to that was working with families in crisis, who I recruited volunteers who were able to house or take care of their children while those families got on their feet. A lot of those children did not move outside of that three-block radius. That was their world. So, we have an opportunity to, one, invite the world to them, but also providing an opportunity for them to get outside of their box so that they can see just how big the world is, and how many opportunities actually do exist for them. If we keep them in their box, how far can they truly go? How far can their minds truly expand if we keep them there?
Thank you. You get to keep that now. I have my very own. So, those were the five pre-scripted questions. And now, we move on to the wild card round. And these are the questions that have come from the audience members. The first goes to Ms. Hurley, and the subject is public and non-public numbers. In 1980, one in eight students attended a non-public school. Now, it's one in 40. Sorry, that's a period, I apologize. In 1980, one in eight students attended a non-public school, now it's one in four. How do you propose increasing public school student numbers?
I would, what I would say to that is, we have... We look, okay. So, what I would say to that is, we look at our private school system here. A lot of the jobs, a lot of the families that I've spoken to, don't feel that our public school system is safe enough, that the quality of education that their children receive is good enough for their children to be in a public school system. So, how do we change that? Is that essentially the question? How do we get more children involved in public school than in private schools?
I think that's the gist of the question.
That's the point that everybody wrote that, but raising our standards, raising the quality of education that we have in our public schools. And I think that we are on our way to doing that. I think, and I believe, that we can do that by coming together as a community, that there are models that exist, collaborative efforts that we can ensue by bringing people to the table, looking at the resources, looking at the solutions that are already on the table. One of the things that we don't have to do is reinvent the wheel. We can look outside to other states and other school systems across the country and find ways to... Does this thing not... Hello? Find ways to provide for our children. Find ways and models across the country that can fit our budget, that can fit the needs of our schools, that can fit the needs of our children here in Hamilton County. So, by raising the standards across the board for all of our Hamilton County schools, then that shows that, hey, these private schools are great, but so are our public schools. Does that... I hope that answered whoever's question that was.
Then, Mr. Smith?
Your word?
Hello? Yes.
I was just kind of trying to do the numbers in my head, because I believe you said one in four?
The card says that in 1980, one in eight students attended a non-public schools, and now it's one in four.
Now, I wonder if that's in Hamilton County, or maybe that's nationwide. It'd be interesting to know where that comes from, because that's Hamilton County. That's interesting. I knew that there was a lot of people that chose to go to private schools. I didn't know it was one in four. So, that, we got some, I'm trying to think, how many private schools we got in the area? So, that's about, what, 10,000 students that are going to private schools? That's interesting. I didn't know that. We got to do a better job. I mean, it's that simple. We got to do a better job. And I think we've begun that process. I think it began, once again, by the board, the leadership, beginning to demonstrate fiscal responsibility. We've done that now, or we're beginning to really do that over the last two years. We got to recruit and retain the best possible teachers we can in our schools that are struggling. We got to put as many resources in there as we can to make our schools, our public schools, attractive. Again, I said earlier, I would like to think that anybody that lives in District 3 and is on for Hickson High School, why there would be any need to go to a private school? What a great place this is. So, we got to do a better job. If that number is accurate, that's new to me, and that's concerning.
I would agree that, you know, Hickson does have a lot of really great schools, but Hickson is not the only district in the county. So, we really need to look across our county and look at the quality of the schools that exist outside of Hickson as well. Because there is something that if these numbers are dictating that children aren't going to private schools, then we need to look beyond that. And yes, I completely agree that we need to recruit and retain the best quality teachers. We need to look at the education that's being provided to them, look at the resources that are being provided, and find ways to accommodate and build up our schools as well.
Mr. Smith, this one is for you. As you have watched the teacher protests around the country centered on teacher compensation and school funding, what are your thoughts on education spending in Tennessee and in Hamilton County?
I say this often, I'll say it again, is I think that one of the most underappreciated, undercompensated profession that there is is the classroom teacher. I've always said that, and I believe that with all my heart. The reality is, that classroom teacher is going to spend more time with a child than the parent will. That, they're valuable, and we need to be doing better. You know, we recently gave our teachers in Hamilton County another raise, two years in a row, and we need to do better. We need to continue to look at that, and that helps us retain, you know, the best and recruit the best possible teachers. Again, you know, we have a limited amount of dollars that we're allocated to work with. And then, we have to look at not only personnel, but transportation, to equipment, to capital needs, the list goes on and on and on. And so, we've got to be a good stewards of those dollars. But every time there's been an issue come up about our teachers here in Hamilton County, I've got their back, because I appreciate what they do, and we need to compensate them fairly.
Thank you. Ms. Hurley?
What was, I wrote down part of the question, what is...
About reading the whole thing, is you've watched the teacher protests around the country centered on teacher compensation and school funding. What are your thoughts on education spending in Tennessee and Hamilton County?
My thoughts on that are that I completely agree that teachers, I've always said it's amazing how teachers can educate a child, and they go off and do great things. And our entertainment industry, although it's wonderful, it's wonderful and it's entertaining, but to have them make more money than the teachers who are out there providing this quality of life to them is, it's interesting. So, I completely agree that we do need to do better. We need to find a way to recruit and retain teachers, but we also need to find a way to support them. Find out why they're not here. Find out why they don't want to come to Hamilton County. Find out why they're leaving. Find out why they don't feel supported. Find out why they're writing. I mean, get to the root cause of what's causing the issue, and listen. Listen to their voices, and then we have something to work with to do something about it. And it takes a lot more than just listening. We have to be willing to be uncomfortable for a time to give these teachers what they need, because they are investing in our future.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, any rebuttal? Ms. Hurley, this one is for you to go first. What is the racial and poverty breakdown of District 3? How does it compare to schools in nearby districts? Does this have any impact on opportunity?
The racial and poverty breakdown? So, the statistics that I found out was that 89% of the population of District 3 is Caucasian, and the rest is a mix of Asian, Hispanic, and African-American. So, predominantly, we have, in this area, Caucasian resident citizens. And what was the other half of that question? It was...
The racial and poverty breakdown of District 3, how does it compare to schools in nearby districts? And does this have any impact on opportunity?
So, the breakdown, I would say that everything affects everything else. So, we have a breakdown, and I said this earlier, that Hickson is Hickson, and we are doing well in a lot of different things. What happens here, it can affect what happens elsewhere. So, one of the things that I noticed was that we have completely blanked on that. It was a statistic, and it's like you come up with numbers and they go, whoop. Okay. Can I see the question?
Sure.
Okay. How does it compare? So, in nearby districts, of course, we know that they are different. We have, and I don't want to get into a history lesson or anything, but in other districts, we know that the racial breakdown is completely different. We know that. But again, what impacts one district impacts another district, whether we like to think so or not, just like with the school board. Being one member of the school board, we can't make a decision without all nine members. So, all of us coming to the table to say, regardless of what's happening, what the racial breakdown or what the poverty breakdown is here, the decisions that we make, we need to think holistically and collectively around what needs to happen for our community. Does this have any impact? Of course, it does. I think that everything, the opportunities that, again, if we are looking at holistically around our county, everything can impact opportunity. If we stay in our bubble, then it's just like what I said before about children who stay in a box, then there's a lack of opportunity for seeing what's outside of that box and vice versa. So, the same thing would exist and happen for our county, our district as well.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I would have had to say, I don't know, if you'd asked me that question. But I can say this, is Hickson High School is 63% Caucasian, 37% minorities. That's a good mix, and we'll be proud of that in District 3.
Ms. Hurley, any rebuttal to that?
I agree.
We found something we can agree on.
There's a lot we can agree on.
Mr. Smith, this one is for you. With the recent school shootings, how do you propose to address mental health problems and school safety?
Well, you know, we've done some things. We've allocated, it's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking. And I think it's getting everybody's attention. And we've done some things in terms of the school board, the system, and have identified additional resources that's in the budget this year. We spent, I think it's 1.7 million, I think is the number. I'd stand to be corrected, but I think I'm right. In new entry systems and screening people coming into our buildings, so that's a good thing. We also, in this year's budget, we have a half a million dollars, which is going to help us to get some more SROs. And all of our schools have SROs. And so, we're going to pay for some more of those SROs. Sheriff Hammond has shared with us that it would take about $4 million a year to have an SRO in every school. And I would love to see that. We need an SRO in every school. But then, once again, the question becomes, how are we going to pay for it? You know, how are we going to pay for it? Well, I know that in the mayor's budget, there's some help coming from there, and I hope that maybe the municipalities will step up and help us some. We've got to do better. We've got to do better. And I think we're going to continue to look at ways, training our teachers and our staff of some things that they can do at schools to recognize, you know, kids that may be struggling and having mental health issues. And then, we need to quickly identify that and get the helps that they need, so hopefully we can stop some of this. But it's alarming. But I think we're moving baby steps, but we got to do more. We got to do better.
So, I would definitely agree with you that the school shootings are, they're, it's alarming. And the report that came out that we, the United States being the worst for school shootings is, it's beyond comprehension that we're living in a day and time where that is happening. So, how do we address mental health? As I mentioned earlier, one of my roles and my duties, I am the program director of a program that works for at-risk youth. And one of the things that I'm working to do is get into the schools and provide our teachers and our staff with education on mental health, giving them tools that they can utilize day in and day out to increase their noticing skills when they see a young person, starting, their behavior's starting to shift a certain way. If we empower our teachers and we give them the tools that they need to intervene and to provide the necessary support to their children, then we have an opportunity that we may not have had prior to. Another thing with the safety, we have SRO officers, yes, but I, one thing that I learned is that 50 of our schools don't have our SRO officers. So, what do we do in the meantime? It is, what, how do we become fiscally responsible and provide that level of safety? What can we do in the meantime until the budget can reflect the support that we need? And I know that I've listed some responses and some ideas to that, but it still takes all of us working together. And we have so many beautiful minds in Chattanooga that we can come up with a solution together.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And I'm going to trade microphones with you, because apparently mine is better than yours, so we see who's important here. It's obviously not me. The fifth question, this one goes to Ms. Hurley, reading from this, "Many people blame the variances in student and school successes on parent involvement. How would you propose bringing equity to students whose parents and home life are not able or willing to provide it? How do we move beyond blaming adults for children's success?"
Can I see the question? That might be better. So, something that, I don't know if you guys have heard of ACES. That's the first thought that comes to mind, is that there's a lack of awareness around trauma, and how trauma impacts livelihood, how it impacts finances, it impacts education, it impacts so many, when you look at life, trauma can play a huge, significant role in that. And when we look at that, there are answers to how we can go about providing for and filling in those gaps. And one way to do that is through wraparound support. So, if there's a parent who, make sure, how would you... So, if there's a parent who doesn't have a home life where a grandparent doesn't know how to read, or a mom is working two jobs and they're a latchkey kid, what are those programs that we can provide? And I don't, again, I don't know everything. I will just tell you that. I don't have all the answers, but I do know, again, that we have beautiful minds working together in Chattanooga. And a lot of those minds have to do with our teachers who are with our children day in and day out. So, bringing them to the table, letting us hear their voices and their solutions is part of the answer. But we have a duty to provide education, and one way to do that is to talk about trauma, to talk about how it impacts lives, to talk about how it impacts their children, because it does. And if you haven't heard of ACES, please look it up. It's called Adverse Childhood Experiences, and it can bring a lot of insight into life, into the home life of the children that don't have opportunities like some children do. So, do I answer that question?
I think so.
Did you hear it say something?
You know, for 25 years, I've seen a lot of kids that being raised by single moms, by grandmamas, by aunties, some of them live over at night, and my son can attest to this, and they're not real sure where they're going to put their head. And they get home, there's no food in the refrigerator, and the lights turn about, daddy's in prison, and mom is bringing more friends in, they're in the back smoking pot, and you expect that child to get up in the morning and concentrate on algebra. Anyway, anyway. Anyway, anyway. So we want the school system to fix all this, and we can't legislate morality, we just can't. It's not the school board's responsibility to do that. You know, I tried to make it a practice of my life to be that gap. A lot of people here now, what have, I don't know, I mean, it's here, maybe seventy-five, what have ever single one of us in this room picked one child? Just one. Just got to pick one. Child would love to mentor, to hold accountable, to encourage. Wow, what difference? We can make it. So we can't depend on the government, the school board, to fix all these social issues. But as individuals, I have a responsibility to help with that. We all do, we all do. It's tough.
So can I answer that? So there's a story of a mom who had, she had seven kids total, and this was a college graduate, mom's a college graduate, and in the course of a year, her husband died right in front of her and her children. So this college educated mom had to make do, she had to put things back in order, put things back in place, because she was a sole breadwinner. And after a time, after going back and forth to work and having to deal with her children who are having behavioral issues, as they should, having a trauma like that happen in front of them, she lost her job, and as a result, that she found herself homeless. So when we look at our parents and look at our children, not every situation is built on a parent or a family member who doesn't have, who they, it's not a morality issue for every family out there. That does exist, but there are a lot of parents out there who are struggling, who are trying to make ends meet, and they just need a little love and a little support. And yes, as individuals, we can do something about that. And I agree too, that it's not a sole responsibility of individual school board members, but as individuals, we can come together, and again, our community can rise together.
Mr. Smith, this one is for you. Both candidates mentioned open enrollment as a strategy for desegregation, but this could cause a mass exodus from our lowest performing schools, leaving our most vulnerable students behind in pockets of concentrated poverty, where test scores are low no matter what interventions are given. Would you support rezoning in a manner that would diversify schools, both racially and socioeconomically, since this method has been shown to improve performance across the board for students?
Well, that's a, zoning is a very controversial topic. And I would suspect that somewhere on Dr. Johnson's to-do list, if you will, that that's there somewhere, because if you look at the way our schools are zoned now, it's kind of Jew-manger, if you will. So it's something that we're going to have to take a look at, and again, I would think that that's on Dr. Johnson's to-do list somewhere. Very controversial issue, and some people will be happy, some people won't. It's tough. Again, I think it's the school board's responsibility, or government's responsibility, to re-engineer communities, and using our kids, our students, as pawns to do that. That's scary. They can call that socialism. So we've got to be real careful with that, and it scares me. But I'm sure that Dr. Johnson will take a look at that.
Thank you. And I think you have three minutes to respond to the question, if you would like.
Can you repeat the question?
You may repeat it, this is all. Both of you mentioned open enrollment as a strategy for desegregation, but this could cause a mass exodus from our lowest performing schools, leaving our most vulnerable students behind in pockets of concentrated poverty, where test scores are low no matter what interventions are given. Would you support rezoning in a manner that would diversify schools, both racially and socioeconomically, since this method has been shown to improve performance across the board for students?
Well, I would have to say that that is an issue that is definitely controversial, and as far as school board goes, that is something that's not our responsibility, but in working with the county commission and finding out what's going to be best for all of our students, again, it's not just for one district or another, it's what's best for all of our children, and coming up with a solution, having all the heads at the table to discuss and find out what's going to be the best solution is what we come to, and as far as coming to an agreement with that. So at this point, I honestly, again, I can't answer that question. So I don't know. One way to put that.
Let me add again that I'm in total support of open enrollment, and again, what that means is that any child ought to be able to go to any school that he or she chooses to. Now, the thing that we're doing, and I know we're going to continue to do, and I'm excited about it, is we're, those schools that you mentioned that people might want to exit from, we'll provide more and more resources, professionals, teachers, coaches, counselors to those schools. So I'll be real anxious to hear if those efforts improve. I think they will.
Thank you. Do you have a minute, if you would like to rebut as well?
The only thing I'd want to say is that we don't know what's going to work, and we don't know, we truly don't know what's, even if we had open enrollment, there are some children that will be left behind, so what do we do for those children? So coming, again, to the table to say what's going to be best for all children is a, I would say, a better solution than, than just saying, hey, open enrollment for everyone, because there will be some, the cream of the crop, and the ones who are at the top who can make those choices. But again, if we're not looking at grandparents who don't drive, or parents who don't have transportation, or other barriers that prevent them, prevent their children from going to the school of their choice, we have to be able to come together to have a solution that works well for all children.
Excellent. Thank you. The final question of the evening goes to Ms. Hurley to begin with. To satisfy the quote-unquote equity issues in some schools, will there be transparency in how and what our tax dollars will be spent on, and how will these decisions be made?
Transparency, and there's something on the back.
Yeah, that's a different question.
Oh.
To satisfy the equity issues in some schools, will there be transparency in how and what our tax dollars will be spent on, and how will these decisions be made?
I think I said this earlier, but I do believe, even as a parent, that transparency is key. If we're talking about equity, then we need to look at, what does equity look like? What is equity when it comes to our children's education? So I do believe that transparency is needed on every level when it deals with our children and their education. Does that answer that question?
I think so.
Yeah.
Ms. Smith?
We recently appointed an equity task force, and I think there's eighteen different agencies around town that are involved in that task force. And we have, our representative is our board chair, Dr. Highland, who's serving on that task force. And I'm going to be real interested to hear what their findings are, and how we can do better to make sure that we're delivering equity to every child in Hamilton County. So their work has begun, and I think it goes through the summer, perhaps before the school year starts next year, we'll have some recommendations that'll come out of that committee. There won't be any you must do, there'll be some recommendations. And then we, as a board, under the leadership of Dr. Johnson, will sort what goes out and figure out the best things that we can do to continue to be equitable and get better at it. So that's exciting.
Thank you. Anything? Do you rebuttal to that?
I mean, I think it's great that we do have an equity task force, and that is a first step. I think that transparency with that is also important, again, with being a parent of a child in Hamilton County public schools. I do think it's important to know what's happening, even before the recommendations come out. If at all possible, if there's a way for transparency to exist on that level, that would be great, or to have more parental involvement in that, or even, I don't know the denounce of the equity task force, but just thinking from a parental standpoint, if we had that opportunity where we could have just some information along the way for our insight, it would be huge to making those recommendations.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, do you have a minute rebuttal? That is the last of our submitted questions per the format. Each of the candidates has one minute to do a wrap-up and closing statement. I believe we led with Ms. Hurley, so we will reverse order at the end. Ms. Smith, I will allow you to go first, you've got a minute to summarize and close up our festivities here this evening.
Page three.
Once again, thank y'all for being here, and I've so enjoyed the last eighteen months serving your, serving your representative. I mentioned earlier that I'm sixty-five, and nobody said you don't look, except my wife, she said that. And I'm retired now officially, but probably working harder than I've ever worked. And my most gratifying part of being on the school board is being in the schools with the teachers, with the principals, representing them, helping them. I'm going to finish strong, I'm going to continue to work hard, but listen, I encourage you, I encourage you, I said it once, I'm going to say it again, draw a circle around yourself, invite somebody in, don't wait for the government to fix all this, don't wait for the school board to fix it. You be the fix, I'll be the fix, and we'll take care of some of these problems. I humbly ask for your vote, for your support, and I'll do everything I can to represent you and all of our kids, not just in District 3, but all of our kids, yes.
So I want to say thank you to UFI Ed, Chattanooga 2.0, for putting this on. What I will say is this, that we are a children's future, so it's extremely important for you to get involved, for me to get involved. So if you're not registered to vote, get registered to vote. There are so many things that we can do, and your vote does count, especially your local elections. So go out, grab a friend, tell them what's happening, get educated about what's happening in our elections this season, and vote! That's one thing that you can do. Another thing is get informed, learn, you can learn more about me, like I said, on Facebook, I've got my website, my cards are out there somewhere, I would love to connect with you, have a one-on-one conversation about your specific concerns, so that we can do something to make changes in our community together. The other thing is, there is a school board meeting happening this Thursday, so if you didn't know about it, it's this Thursday at 5:30, so come out, get informed, get involved, and let's rise together in Hamilton County. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Be willing to come out this evening and engage in this dialogue, obviously it's a very important part of the process, and grueling though it may be. Thank you both for being willing to serve in this capacity as a school board member. Thank you to all of you for being here this evening and being, and best enough in this process to come out this night. I wish both of you the best of luck. Anything, Hurley?